Recording in progress.
Just real quick before we start the. All right, if we could, let's call this meeting to order. This is the Elbert County Planning Commission. It is June 15th. See what time we have here. It's 7:08. If we could, please all stand for a prayer and a prayer.
Lord, make me an instrument of your peace. Where there is hatred, let me sow love. Where there is injury, pardon. Where there is doubt, faith. Where there is despair, hope. Where there is darkness, light. And where there is sadness, joy. We know that you're with us at all times and all places, if only we turn to you in faith. So we turn to you now, seeking your continued blessings on those of us who have chosen public service, as well as those who are with us tonight in person or through Zoom to join us in our deliberations and decision making. We ask that you would give all of us patience and the commitment to respect and to listen to each other. For the members of this commission, help us always be mindful that we are public servants.
Help us to hear with our hearts and to think clearly and reasonably. Help us to have the vision to look at the issues before us with wisdom and the determination to do what is best, even if it's not easy. Guide us in all we do to work for the common good. Tonight, we also ask your blessings on our courageous first responders, as well as those who seek their help. We ask your blessings on all those who support and contribute to the work of this commission, knowing without their diligent efforts, our work here would not be possible. Loving Creator, we pray all these things in the name of Jesus, and all that is holy. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every team and justice for all. Thank you all. Okay, Christina, we can do a roll call.
Okay, Justin Clausen. Danny Wilcox. Jason Vermillion. Roger Burton.
Yeah.
Peter Hoganike.
Present.
Jeff Franken. Dan Mahalik. Van Sands. And Dwayne Owens. So that's six.
All right, got a form. Next part, move in. Christina, you didn't see the report, staff report?
I'm trying to think of the last time I gave updates from the B O C C and what those items were. So I'm recollecting that I might have missed one. So I'm going back to the May 12th B O C C. These were the items that were on. Arrowhead Trail was a variance, so I did not come before the planning commission, just the B O A, Board of Adjustments, and was approved for 40 feet, I believe, setback from the property line. Jubilee rezone and Porter rezone, and also the Spring Valley Ranch service plans were all approved. So apologize that that was not on the agenda, but I wanted to make sure I was caught up. We hadn't had a lot of stuff going to them in a little bit. Also, I want to introduce my new folks over here. As you may remember, I said last meeting, Greg was leaving us and Jen was leaving us. Jen's still with us. She's working now part-time from home and part-time in the office as she's working to get her house in the market. Greg's last day was last Tuesday, and these fine folks, Cody Spade and Ally McGahy? McGahy? I'll get it right eventually. Started last Monday, so they've been here. This is their second week. So Ally's my planning tech. She has some experience with economic development. Her worked with Man to Springs and worked with her bachelor's in economics and got a taste for planning while she was working with Man to Springs Chamber of Commerce. So we're happy to have her on board to help out and help her grow. And Cody comes to us from Carroll County, Maryland. See, I remember stuff sometimes. And he has about two years' experience working for that county. I think maybe one month shy, if maybe, pretty close. So we're happy to have both of those folks on board now. They're been in process the last week, almost week and a half, trying to catch up on all of our processes and what gets done when. The other thing I want to announce is the direction I've been told is we're going to start moving back to the B O C C meeting room. But we did have notices already go out for the next meeting on July 6th, so we're going to have one more meeting here. And then the meeting after that, July 20th, will be back at the B O C C meeting room. And I'm told we have the same setup there as we do here. It's just a little bit different because the room is smaller. So I have to look into all that and figure out how that works, where I need to sit for that. Thank you.
Alan, Cody, welcome. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, consent agenda. Do we have anything, Christina?
No, sir.
Okay, approval of meeting minutes. I think we have a set of meeting minutes. We have the April 20th? Can you hear me? Oh, that better, Dwayne? Okay. We have a set of meeting minutes? April 20th?
April 20th. The one from the previous meeting, I still need to get completed, so they'll be on the next agenda.
Okay. So. In a public hearing process? Do you want to approve the meeting minutes? You guys, can I have a motion?
Second. Make a motion that we approve the April 20th meeting minutes.
And Dwayne Owens seconds it? All right, do we have any further discussion on the minutes? Can we forego the reading of them? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Under the public hearing process, I'll kind of quickly go over. We enter into this process through just a couple of things to state. First of all, we're a volunteer group. We're the planning commission. We were tasked with a quasi judicial process. And then we compare the application to the codes and ordinances that we have. Out of this, when we review an application, three outcomes. We could have possibly three outcomes. One is approval. Two, disapprove. Three, approve with conditions. And when I say approve, what that means is that we forward it to the B O C C with our agreement that we agree with the application. Second, if we disapprove, it will still go to the B O C C, but with our recommendation of not approval. Third is those conditions, we can add conditions to the application, and those will be forwarded to the B O C C. Ultimately, the B O C C has the authority and control over the acceptance of the application. So our process goes, starts with a presentation from the staff currently from all of you folks. And the second part is we'll have the applicant to present their site, okay, and then give us additional information. Then we'll look for citizen comments, any questions. We'll try to keep track of all those and then resend them to the applicant or staff to where we can get answers to the questions or concerns. After that's completed, we will question. We will need to question the applicant or staff on the application, and then we'll vote. So with that, we'll start with the, I think we have one application tonight. It's the Jane's rezone. And this is strictly rezoning property from one thing to another. So if you could, Christina, please, forward.
Thank you, sir. Christina Stanton, CDS Director, and this is Jane's rezone, case number RZ 190052. Let's see if this is gonna, there it goes. Oops, too far. Which is a rezone of a 24.96 acre parcel from agricultural A to agriculture two, A2. The landowner, Brian and Angel, Jane's applicant representative, Tom Maroney is present. Again, it's 24.96 acres located at 29495 County Road 93, Reima. They had a pre-op meeting with us back May 30th, 2018, and I did notice when I was setting my PowerPoint together that I had a typo in the application submittal. It said 2020, I believe, January 27th, but it was actually this year, 2021. It's only had the one referral was from February 2nd through 23rd of 2021, which is our standard 21-day referral. We have planning commission tonight, June 15th, 2021, and this item is scheduled to be before the Board of County Commissioners on July 14th, 2021. So here we have the zoning and aerial maps, so you can see that everything else in the vicinity, for the most part, is agriculture. There are some other properties out there that are A2 and some are A2, very small ones. I'm trying to see where they're even at. I know there's one right at the corner of County Road 93 and 122. Can't even see where the other one's at right now. But you can see this is kind of an unusual shaped lot. The applicants sold off a 35-acre tract with existing house, and this was the remnant piece. So existing conditions of the site, this is a northern lot on what was originally approximately 60 acres, generally rolling grasslands that are generously treed with mature pines, collection, sorry, on the eastern half, with the western half sloping steeply down towards the west, towards a collection of natural runoff areas. And I do have a screenshot here of a wetlands map, so that you can see there aren't any wetlands here on this property. You're right, closest one, too, would be north of the property, I think a freshwater pond on a different property. So there are also no wet, no floodplains identified. These are notification information. The property owners within 1,320 feet of the property boundaries were notified on April 19th, 2021. Sign was posted on the property on May 3rd, 2021, and notice was published in the Elbert County News on May 27th, 2021. And I think, like, did I have a typo in there on the report or not? Yes, I think I had April 29th for the newspaper in my report, and I caught when I was cleaning up this that that was an error. This is a screenshot of the rezoned exhibit. And as noted, I think in our staff report there, we are doing the minor plat concurrently to clean up this split. And this rezone will bring it into conformance with the zoning regulations. So referrals were sent to Building Department, Public Health, Division of Water Resources, the Elbert County School District, C2 Kiowa Fire Protection District, and Kiowa Conservation District. And of those, the most notable was the water. They needed some additional information. This applicant did have a water attorney that submitted a supply letter May 4th of 2021. I haven't heard anything back from the state. Tom may be able to speak to that a little bit here shortly. The school district had no objections, but it did state that a cash and lieu and improvements fees would be due at the time of subdivision. They did not specify what those fees were. And the other agencies that were referred all had no objection. So standard review criteria for rezone is in Article 3C4 of the Elbert County Zoning Regulations. List's criteria is A through F for all rezoned requests, and the six criteria are as follows. A, whether proposed rezoning conforms to and is generally consistent with the goals and policies of the Elbert County Conference of Plan. B, whether the proposed rezoning is compatible with surrounding land uses. C, whether the proposed rezoning would adversely impact the provisions of public services. D, whether the proposed rezoning would adversely impact the environment. E, whether the proposed rezoning would create unreasonable traffic congestion or burden the existing road system without improvements. And F, whether the proposed rezoning will not otherwise be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of present or future inhabitants of Elbert County. Kind of answered that, those questions, those comments here on this next slide in my evaluation, and it comes right out of the staff report. The Elbert County Conference of Plan is supported with the smaller developments. It offers additional low-density residential lots and, you know, does not eliminate the agricultural usage or rural character of the area. The land uses in the surrounding area are agricultural and single-family residential. The proposal will not adversely impact the provisions of public services and is approved by emergency services. Again, that goes back to the no comment from our health and our fire folks. Proposal will not adversely impact the environment. It will correct and bring into compliance the lot that was illegally created in August of 2020. The proposal will allow for a minor plat and correct the illegally, yeah, pretty much same thing I just said there, illegally created lots. The rezone corrects the zoning to conform with the minimum lot sizes in the Elbert County zoning regulations. And the minor plat, which is being reviewed concurrently and will be approved of mystery if and when this rezone is approved, will correct the illegal lot and bring it into conformance with the Elbert County subdivision regulations. And the addition of one more lot will not significantly impact the existing road system. And F, the proposed rezoning will not otherwise be detrimental to the health, safety, or welfare of present or future inhabitants of Elbert County. The Health Department and Fire Protection Districts, like I said before, both of them had no objections to the request. And so the findings are based on those items as well out of our zoning regulations. This findings, A through E, proposal is in general conformance with the Elbert County Conference of Plan. B, the proposal meets criteria for approval in the Elbert County zoning regulations. C, the Elbert County subdivision regulations are not applicable to the rezoning application. D, the proposal is compatible with existing and allowable land uses in the surrounding area. And E, the proposal will not result in significant impact to the health, safety, and welfare of residents and owners of the surrounding area. So staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners of the rezone Jane's RZ 190052, subject to conditions one through three, and these are our standard three. One, the applicant will be required to remove the public hearing signs within seven days of approval by the Board of County Commissioners. Two, the rezone shall not become effective until all fees are paid, conditions of approval are met, and the rezone exhibit is recorded. And three, recordation of all appropriate documentation to occur within 180 days of Board of County Commissioners approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. I believe, Tom, are you representing Mr. James? I believe, Tom, are you representing Mr. James?
Hello. Thank you. Thank you, commissioners, for being here. Welcome to the two new additions to the planning community development staff. Thank you, Christina, because she's just taken on a lot more than she probably needs to, but she's doing a great job on this and other, I don't know how many other applications I have in, but there's a few. I really did. What this was is that Brian James, he's lived out there on that 60 acres for 20 years, something like that. And through conditions with medical conditions with his wife, this and that, he really needed to, they sold the house and 35 acres a year, something like that ago, and wanted to rezon the rest of it so they could build another house on that. Longtime residence of Elbert County. He's a minister over here at the church in Kiowa. Like I said, long time, long time residence. So we just want to bring this into compliance. They want to build their home, new home there. We talked to fire, we've talked to everyone. They're all in agreement with it as far as access is concerned. And as far as the water is concerned, we had to go through a little back and forth with the state, but we've got that taken care of. They, right now, do have their well permit to drill a new well on that, okay? Unfortunately, with COVID, the state, even though we're here and we're without masks, they still are not allowing anybody to come down into the office. And so it takes a little while for them to get back and forth. But we do have a well permit issued for this property, and that's been taken care of. Otherwise, it's pretty much straightforward. As you can most likely see, it's just something that they needed to do to move on with their next step. So I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. And C, do we have any citizen comments on the application? We have nobody present in house, so I'm looking at Zoom. Can you see any, Christina? Thank you. An easement address.
As far as the address is concerned, the county will not issue an address to the property until the rezoning is complete and the subdivision is recorded. They can't issue an address on that until that's done. As far as, what was the other question was?
There was egress, access.
Oh, no. They, they have a, they have an easement. They have an easement that we've recorded that they share the same access. That's a recorded easement at this point in time. And that was approved by the fire department as far as access was concerned.
I think the caller asked about lot numbers. Yeah, lot numbers.
I'm sorry?
Had to do with lot numbers.
Oh, oh, yeah, the lot numbers. The 35-acre parcel is not part of the subdivision that's coming up. It's, that's a 35-acre parcel, which is legal through Senate Bill 35. So this is just Lot 1, that's it. There's, the 35-acre parcel is a meets and bounds legal description that does not require a lot number. And it is not part of the subdivision process, which is administrative. So it's just going to be Lot 1, James subdivision.
Because the 35 is a 35.
The 35 has nothing to do with it. The 35, the 35 does not, is not part of the proposed subdivision. Because it's a, it's 35 acres or more. So we just had to bring, we had to bring this Lot 1 into conformance with the zoning regulations because it was below 35 acres. Once the subdivision is, once the subdivision portion of this application is completed, then the assessor will issue a new address for the James piece. No, no. The assessor will actually issue a new schedule number with a new address for it. It doesn't have to be deeded separately. They already own it. The James owned all of the 60 acres. They deeded off 35 acres. They own what's left, which is the 25-plus acres. So in order for that to become legal, we have to go through the zoning and the minor development. And that, at that point in time, then the assessor will issue a new schedule number for the property and issue a new address for the property. They can't do that until this is done.
Until the property is divided.
No, because a deed has nothing to do with the address. The, the only thing that transfers legally, as far as transfer of property, is a legal description. It has nothing to do with the address. So when the assessor issues a new address, it will be addressed to that, that property and have its own parcel number.
This is basically a subdivision of one.
Subdivision of one, yes, sir. You're correct. Thank you.
And one doesn't apply to anything other than 35. And the only reason the 35 is mentioned is for historical context.
Yes, I mean, yeah, the 35 is a legal parcel right now. It's, the 35 has nothing to do with this. It's not Lot 1 and 2. It's just Lot 1 and that's it. The 35 is a meets and bounds legal description. This over 35 acres that transfers the property. And as I said, the assessor cannot issue a new address to that until the rezoning and the subdivision is complete.
Until you've got everything divided.
I'm sorry?
Till you've got everything divided.
Right, right. So, and as far as legal transfer, legal transfer, I've been in the title industry for 40 years. And it's just a mention as far as the address is concerned. Addresses do not transfer legally. It has to be the legal description. So the new legal description on the 25 acres will be Lot 1. The 35 acres doesn't change. Still meets and bounds.
Okay, do we have any further questions? All right, now let's go to our, up here. You guys have any questions? Go ahead. Wayne, what do you got?
I'm, I'm new to the commission, so I, this Duane Owens. I'd like to ask, was it an oversight that the, the split, the original split was done in error or?
No, no, no. No, it wasn't, no, it was not an oversight. As Christina can tell you, the James came in almost two years ago anticipating this. And because of financial conditions and health reasons for the family, they had to sell the house in 35 acres. And so, yeah, it was, it wasn't an oversight, but they did understand, and I told them from the beginning, if you do that, it's going to be an illegal parcel until we rezon it. And they were, and I think Christina will agree with my comments on that, that they talked to the county long before they did it. And they talked to me, and I told them, well, you're going to create an illegal parcel because of Senate Bill 35, okay? I deal with this a lot. But it was something that, you know, it was like kind of the cart before the horse. But for, you know, a lot of different reasons, they had to do it that way. And so they just want to move back. They're living with our kids in Castle Rock right now, and I think their kids are tired of them. But that's, yeah, so it wasn't, it was intentional, okay? It wasn't, they weren't trying to skip anything or try to do anything, you know, under the table. They knew from the beginning, and I told them from the beginning, we're going to have to do this before you can do anything with that 25 acres. So that's where we're at right now.
Thank you, Tom.
Yes, yes, sir.
All right, any more, Jordan? Got anything else? Good.
I have a question. On several documents that are included in the application, it indicates that the proposed water demand and water uses will be 1.5 acre-feet per year. But on a statement of ownership of an amount of groundwater in the Denver Basin, et cetera, et cetera, it says that the average annual amount of withdrawal will be 9.55 acre-feet per year.
Well, the difference in that is between the well permit, which was, it was, has been issued, which is that 1.5 acre-feet per year. The decree allows for 9, 9-plus acre-feet a year. But the state said, no, you can only use 1.5 acre-feet per year. So they have, they actually have a decree for more water than they're going to be allowed to use.
And, and the well will be metered.
I'm sorry?
The well will be metered.
Oh, yes, sir.
Right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so the 9.55 really is immaterial at this point?
It's immaterial, well, it is, but it isn't. But it's up to the state, even if you have 9.5 acre-feet. Because what they had to do, they had to go in and do a replacement plan to allow a Denver well, which is not non-tributary, okay? And per the state, if you have anything under 35 acres, unless you do a replacement plan and show that you can put that amount of water back into the stream system, and that's done through engineering and with, through engineering and, and, and you just replace it through the septic system, that you have 95% going back in, so you don't have a depletion of the stream system, which would be Kiowa Creek, which is quite a bit away, but that's what they do. So they, they can only use 1.5 acre-feet a year, which is around 500,000 gallons a year. And most single-family residences use a quarter acre foot. So they have the right to have household use, irrigation of 1 acre of lawn or garden, and watering of livestock. That, you know, it's, they got a lot more, they have a lot more water than they'll ever use.
Okay, so that, you, you started to answer my second question, which was in the documents, it says there has to be a replenishment plan, and that is the septic system, correct?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. And that's engineered, okay? We have, when we do a replacement plan, and that, and that takes six months to do, but we have to put it in there. And so the state has to approve that the water going back into the stream, as they say, is sufficient to not deplete the not non-tributary water.
So my last question was, the, the only documentation we have here from the Division of Water Resources says dated February 21, the proposed water demand and water uses for Lot 2 are not provided. So Lot 2, that is what you said earlier.
Lot 2 is not, there is no Lot 2.
So the previous lot, the 35 acres, has a well.
It has a well.
And that's been approved to stay with that land.
Yes, sir.
But from the information I see, we, we still don't have a statement from the Division of Water Resources indicating that this, this application has been approved. You just, you said earlier that you have a well permit.
Correct.
And why don't we have that?
Well, I can, I, I, we have, we do have the well permit. I believe that we did send it, but we do have one. And we wouldn't, we have, we would not have gotten to this point unless the state was satisfied with what we have proposed.
Okay, my, my concern with that is we don't have, we're approving something and we don't have any documentation that says that. We have your word for it, but that doesn't necessarily satisfy my concern that we're going to be making action on something that we don't have the documentation.
Well, what I can tell you is that prior to the VOCC meeting, whatever additional documentation, I'm sorry.
Actually, I was going to say, you had stated that you've got the well permit. So what we should do, and I would offer this up, is that there is a condition that that's provided prior to going to the VOCC.
Which we, yeah, and that's.
Which you gotta do anyway.
Which I have to do anyway, which we understand that.
I understand that. I want to do it on the record, and that will be part of a motion.
Yeah, no, I, I, I respect that. And I think that's a valid request, which we can do.
Quite often when we're in the middle of.
Well, we, you do have to understand that, and I think Christina will agree with me on this, that it's pretty difficult right now to get the state to respond to what they have. Our water attorneys have given everything, they've given everything to Christina, that it's all taken care of, but yeah, that's fine. And that can be a condition, I have no problem with that.
Well, let's get, I think I got Jason out there. I want to see if he has any more questions. Then we'll work on the condition, how's that? Jason?
Yes, I don't have any questions.
Okay. All right, now I think we have a condition to create. I think you got some terminology, it's pretty simple. The well permit be provided prior to going to.
Yeah, I just, okay, relative to RZ-19-052, I'll make a motion that we approve the, or recommend to the Board of County Commissioners approval for the rezone with a condition.
for the rezone with the conditions that staff suggested in their memo, and with an additional condition that a letter, well permit, or other document from the state engineer Division of Water Resources concerning approval of the water availability for the new lot and the new well be in hand before it is presented to the county commissioners.
We can do that? You guys okay with that? Okay, so you've got the condition, you made a motion. Do we have a second? Oh, second, seconding? Okay, you accept that condition, right, Tom? You accept the condition?
Oh, yes, sir, yes, sir. We accept conditions.
Hey, any further discussion on that? Christina, go ahead, please. Second was Peter. All right. You've got motion and a second, no further discussion, so all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. Thank you, Christina. Thank you, guys. Have a nice night. Let's hope it rains again.
Now, your, your condition actually included the acceptance of the rezone through, I believe.
It did.
Yeah, so it was all together. It was all included.
So we're good?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
I'd like to add, for Tom, thank you for being here in person. I hate Zoom meetings.
So do I.
I got used to seeing you up here, but I prefer.
I don't like what I look like up there.
Prefer having the applicant in person. Thank you.
It's like ten minutes away, so I'll do it. So thank you, guys.
Mr. James, thank you.
Thank you. My pleasure. Appreciate what you guys are doing.
All right, at this point.
Hope to see more of you, Tom.
More applications.
You're going to see a lot more of me. Before I move to Florida.
Okay, so, meeting adjourned.
Make a motion, adjourn.
Second.
Good. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Recording.